She stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roca.
Yeah.
Cummings here.
Cool here, Charles Cool here, Griffin here.
Wired here.
Huts here.
And Tim is on vacation. Good for him. Meeting minutes, approval of June 1st, 2023. Any additions or corrections? Get myself out of your way.
Griffin moved to accept the meeting minutes on June 1st, 2023.
Austin Cool second.
Motion by Griffin, second by Austin Cool, to approve June 1st meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried. Sid is in input. Seeing no. Old business, Class A beer license, cigarette license, and annual mobile home. This was from last month. That needed to be published.
It was published.
Everything is all good and ready to roll now? Okay?
Captain Dennis looked over everything and approved the people, and he looks over all of our good stuff.
Is there still a liquor license available in the city?
No.
No, the asylum got one, and then River's Edge did before that. So, yeah, so there are not. At the moment, I think there's something.
There's beer and wine and those kind of things, but no hard liquor.
Right. There's some things changing that I saw, and the league was talking about stuff, but it's not here yet. So, do we need to take these individually, all as one? What is your preference?
All as one.
All as one is fine? All right?
Griffin moved to accept the Class A and B beer and liquor cider license. Period 7/1/23 to 6/30/2024.
Wired will second.
Okay, so we're not doing them all as one. We're just taking them separately. Okay. Motion by Griffin, second by Wired, to approve A, Class A, B, Class A and B beer and liquor license. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried. Cigarette license.
Captain make a motion to approve the cigarette license application.
Austin Cool, second.
Motion by Petz, second by Austin Cool, to approve cigarette license applications for July 1 through June of 2024. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried. Annual mobile home license for the same period.
Captain make a motion to accept the applications for annual mobile home license.
Cummings will second. There we go. We're spreading it around. Motion by Petz, second by Cummings, to approve the annual mobile home license for the same time period. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried. Meeting summary since last council. Gabe's not here. He said he was gonna be here.
He might be. They're running privately on the baseball games, so he might be here.
All right.
And unfortunately, I didn't attend the meeting, so I.
Nobody else is on it here, right? All right, well, we will table that. There is, you know, information in the packet of where it's at, but if Gabe has anything to add later, we can always ask for that. Cable TV. Are they putting their minutes in here now? When I was flipping through here, I don't think I saw it. So, LaRon usually sends it, so I think we're just missing it from this one.
This one.
Yeah, so, well, we'll, yeah. Get a copy, maybe just submit it for the next meeting, so that we have it. Water and Light, that would have been Tim. He's not here, but Joy is.
Do you just want me to talk about the meeting from Tuesday?
Generally, because that's what this is about, the 6/13.
Do you send the minutes out? I sent them to you.
They're in the packet. Tim sometimes just babbles real quick, something you're working on or talking about.
So, we're bringing three things before you tonight. The CMR, the construction payment, which Ben will go through, and the wire transfer policy.
All right, and that is below, I do believe, right? Yep. All right, thank you. Finance and Personnel, that was tonight. Anything you want to add, Charlie?
Nope. Most everything that we discussed
Is done.
is on the agenda tonight. We did discuss preliminary discussions on the budget process coming forward.
Fantastic. More to come on that. All right, in your packet, consent agenda items from May. If there are any questions. It says cable board. I don't think I saw it.
I don't think it's in there.
Yeah, all right. So, with the exception of that.
Captain make a motion to approve consent agenda items.
Cummings will second. Motion by Petz, second by Cummings, to approve the consent agenda items. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried. All right. There's Gabe.
I said you were running one little bit.
That's all right.
Big coach midwin.
We just kind of went through the meeting summary. Is there anything from the park meeting that you would like to talk about?
Basic information for the July 7th. It was a pretty relaxed meeting.
Nothing new. All right, thank you very much. All right, Charlie, Finance meeting. You've got a bunch in a row here.
All right, May 2023 financial statements. Payroll, we'll make a motion to accept payroll in $81,610. General dispersments of $252,632.32, and accepting the clerk and treasurer's reports on file at City Hall.
Cummings will second. Motion by Charlie Cool, second by Cummings, to approve the May financials as listed. Roca.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Might be up to Ron.
Yes.
Wired, yes.
That's yes.
Motion carried. Fire Department payroll processing.
Payroll, Fire Department payroll processing was discussed at Finance with no recommendation on any changes there. They're taking it back to their group to discuss.
Discussion's ongoing, so that will just be tabled. Signs from Sign Master.
Signs from Sign Master. This was in regards to the entrance signs. We did, in our contingency this year, we did allot some monies out of contingency to replace sign or locations that didn't have signs, so we have new ones put up. These are, this is a proposal. There's option one and option two to revamp the existing signs that are out there. And the discussion at Finance was to include this in the budget process going forward for further action, so there was no action at this time.
All right. Fire Department repairs to the water trucks.
This, again, Fire Department, we.
We tabled that one as well.
We tabled that one as well. There was some question on where the finances were gonna come out, if it was gonna be something out of their capital fund, or if they had undesignated funds possibly that they could use. They were gonna take that back to the officers and report back next month, so that was tabled.
So, all of these things will be coming back, so there's just no motion. It's just FYI, but it will be coming back. Lighting at Madison Street and Monroe Street. I think you guys did get the pricing. So, this is something that we've been working on for quite a while, and finally got the DOT on board and pricing and ordered through utilities. So, Charlie, have the rest of it there.
Yeah, we, this is to replace the existing stop sign that's in front of luminous rose stars down there with a brighter light. It's our recommendation, and I'm gonna make the motion to approve that purchase of the additional lighting, and for $17,000, with the funding that come out of undesignated funds.
Wired will second.
Motion by Charlie Cool, second by Wired, to approve the purchase of the lighting for $17,000 under undesignated funds. So, this is ordered, or will be ordered. I know Utility have been talking about it. It's like eight weeks. So, this is going to be a combination unit, just like the one on the corner in front of Hartwig's Cars. So, it's one sign, one light. Everything is all in one spot, so we're not cluttering things up. Roca.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Wired, yes.
Huts, yes.
Motion carried. Television, televising the storm sewer. The expediter.
Yeah, so this was in the packet. This was a bill that we received for televising 89, correct?
89. All of these medicine from the bridge by 203 to the city limit, and then the stretch of storm sewer that we have currently on 19 in front. I have a little bolt here, because they're gonna cross it again, so.
So, they did 19, too? So, whole project are done there?
19 and 89.
Is there a report on both the phone, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it, why did we have to televise it? Aren't we automatically just gonna replace it anyway?
No.
Or they want to know where it is?
No, because they're doing more of it. It's not a total reconstruct, so all you're gonna do is spot, fix curb, gutter, storm sewer, and then the road surface, along with our sanitary sewer monitor.
Okay. So, this was per the DOT's request, right?
Yes.
All right.
Remember, what's your budget amount for storm sewer was? Can you discuss that?
$500.
$500. Okay.
Yeah, so when the DOT comes in and tells you that they need something, they don't really care if you didn't budget for it or not? Yep. And where is that coming from?
This was the smaller one. So, at Finance.
Okay.
The recommendation from Finance, we'll make a motion that we utilize $500, which was the budget amount in Chad's budget, and the remainder to come out of contingency, not to exceed the invoice amount.
Wired, second.
Motion by Charlie Cool, second by Wired.
Which was that, did you say?
$53,000.
We can, wanna add that to this?
Motion carried from.
Yes, but I didn't. All right, Roca.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Wired, yes.
Huts, yes.
Motion carried. Now it's the joy show. Water and Light. Resolution 2023-20. This is the wire transfer policy that we started here, but you guys need to send it to your board for your pink packet, the actual policy. Here, take it. All right, just keep going. Yeah, all right, put it in here. There we go, pink packet. Anything change on it, Joy, or did they just approve it as it was written, or?
Um, it's, it's no longer includes the word emergency. I guess that's probably the big thing. The last sentence.
The last sentence? And you want to think policy for?
I did it all the way through it.
Okay. Used to say use an emergency only? Because you guys do do wire anyway. Okay. All right, so the original one is in pink, the new one, correct?
This is just the resolution for the policy. Okay, so, yeah. Oh, they go together.
So, it's a resolution. I thought you said we took something out.
Yeah, did you revise it?
Words, words. Oh, so you already took it out. This is the new one. Got it. Check it today. Got it. All right, all right. So, we just need a motion to approve or question whatever.
So, your resolution that's in here still says emergency. So, there's two different. Just making sure that you're signing it. I will.
Oh, yeah. In emergency. And I thought I saw two. Isn't there another one?
No, there is not another one. 100% not.
So, when you sign the resolution, you need to make sure it's the word H that we approved at our ration meeting?
I will update it. So, we will update it to match what the pink says. Okay, we can do that?
Thank you.
As necessary. You got it. All right.
Captain will make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-20 with the change indicators.
Removing the emergency.
Griffin, second.
Motion by Petz, second by Griffin, to approve the Resolution 2023-20, removing the words emergency per the sheet. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried. Resolution 2023-23, prostitutes. Renew the annual waste treatment plant compliance report that we always get. I have no idea what I'm reading when I see it.
So, this is just an annual report that we fill out every year for the DNR.
Yep.
It's required. It requires your approval. We did get straight A's, so it's a good thing.
Yep.
That sounded very bad. If you want to see that.
It's been delay. All right, straight A's. I like it.
So, this is reporting for 2021, but we're just approving.
It's, is it 21? It should be 22, shouldn't it, Ben? The pink one here says.
Pink one says 2021.
Last updated 6/22.
And then the.
The listeners might have changed it. Maybe we should do the other stuff in here.
I thought this was for 22. Isn't that 22? Yeah, it just must be.
Yeah, they didn't change it.
Didn't update the date, I guess.
So, actually, it's updated 6/23.
I wonder if I grabbed the wrong one when I sent it to you.
It said reporting, but then the last updated is 6/22.
Right, 6/22.
So, you're updating 22 or 21?
We were on 6/23.
Okay. You must have grabbed the wrong one, because I have the right one.
What do you got?
I grabbed. That's the one that you emailed me.
It says last.
Which one? 6/7/23, reporting for 22. Still got straight A's, which is the most important.
Sounds better.
Yes, yes. Yeah, for whatever reason, this is the one we got. That's fine. We have the new one. We'll make sure this gets. Do you need to keep?
Make sure I got them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I might have grabbed the wrong one off the part files.
Yeah, mine says 2021, the one that you emailed me.
Right.
So, you'll have to just send me the new one, and I'll share it with everybody.
Yeah, and that way we've got it filed correctly in the paperwork. Well, that was fun.
Thank you.
All right, very good. See, we read things. Okay.
Yeah, my last, you're a cheater.
Yeah, 2022. Very good. All right, now that we have all the proper numbers, what is your pleasure?
Austin Cool make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-23.
Petz will second.
Motion by Austin Cool, second by Petz, to approve Resolution 2023-23 for the 2022 report. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried. All right, City of Waterloo Project tracking budget and funding allocations for the wastewater model.
So, Ben's gonna handle these next three.
Yep.
All right.
All right, so this, kind of all three of these are going hand in hands. Are you okay if I quick describe all of them, and then you guys can take action as we go through them?
Okay.
So, first page in your packets, this is gonna, this is the second one of these that would have come before you, but this is gonna now be happening on a monthly basis. So, the project tracking sheet here is to allocate the funding. So, this is basically a loan request for Rural Development, and will eventually include Clean Water Fund for payment of the treatment plant stuff. So, every month, we'll be itemizing out all of the expenses for the project. It'll show up on here. The column that says this claim, so column D is the expenses that are being summarized on this report, and then it gives you claims to date, and where, what percentage of completion is associated with each one of those items. So, each month, that'll come before you, and then this is then gonna get sent to Rural Development for dispersment of funds. So, this is really a funding request. Then, in conjunction with that, every month, you guys now will be getting a contractor pay request. That requires a separate action. It is a part of this funding request, but this is gonna be the ports and construction. So, all of these will go through Commission first, and then they'll come before you. So, Commission will be recommending them to you on the pay request. This cover sheet here is a summary of expenses to date. What it does is list the original price of the contract. This is very similar to the ones I'm sure you guys get for street projects. Any adjustments by change order, how much work they've completed to date. This will be a little bit unique on Rural Development, because they require 5% retainage through the entire project. So, whenever the contractor finishes, you're gonna pay them for 95% of it, up until the time that the plant is up and running, and then you will start to disperse those funds. A normal, a street project, or really anything that is not Rural Development funded in Wisconsin, it's 5% up to 50% completion, and then, so at the end of the project, you only have 2.5% retainage. Rural Development does require more of that during the course of the project, which is to your benefit ultimately. So, it has that. You subtract it off. You subtract what you previously paid them. In this case, it's zero, and then that gives you how much you owe the contractor for the month. So, every month, you're gonna have this come in front of you, line 8, if you remember that. Every month, line 8 is the number that you're authorizing. And then, there's always going to be pages and pages and pages of supporting document that documents where, what things happened over the course of the month. We will also, and that'll get to the next thing, is also have a monthly report that we send in for you guys. Just gives you a little bit more of a plain English description of it, but if you're curious and looking at this, column, I can get it upside down, E, is the one that itemizes out where the fees are coming from each month. This is gonna look a little different than what you're used to seeing with a street project, because this is a lump sum contract, so there's not gonna be quantities or anything like that. They'll just be percent completed for each one of those items. Probably 300 some items there. And then, the last thing that you guys will be seeing every month is just our monthly reports. Again, all of these will go through Commission first, but it'll just be a documentation for you guys, more of an FYI of all of the things that have happened. So, this month, it was, the contractor got mobilized to the site. They have installed a couple pipes. They have gone through and done some of the soil amendments, so there is very poor soils on that site, so we're doing some piers on two of the structures, and they've started pouring foundations for some of the new structures. There will always be a boatload of pictures, just so you guys can kind of see the progress, and then after this month's existence of first progress report, we'll also be adding a percent completed graph, just so you kind of get a picture of, you know, how many dollars have you spent to date compared to the total project, and how far along is that in a big picture? So, all of these will come before the Commission every month. The Commission will recommend them to you. I'm not planning on coming to every monthly meeting unless there's something real to talk about, but as always, if you've got questions, you can pass them through to me and Barry, and I can get them answered. So, the big things that you guys will always need to take action on are those first two items. The second item, or the third item, does not require any action. It's just an FYI for you guys.
So, is there have to be separate? I mean, we can normal financial dispersments on a monthly basis. Does this have to be separate, like a resolution?
Because it needs to make some.
Doesn't need a resolution. I've always seen it done as a specific agenda item for action.
Approve the pay request.
To approve the pay request.
So, say the two things again that you said that were.
Items.
Oh, in here. I'm looking at this one. What items were two things?
Yeah, sorry. No, item three and four, I'm very careful.
Gotcha. So, item three and item four, these things will be coming to us on a monthly basis.
Correct.
As in, like a sheet, like just a simple sheet like this, or the whole wall X?
All, all of the sheets that are in here will come every month. That first sheet is associated with item three, B3 on the agenda.
Yep.
And then, the next, whatever is 10 or 12 pages.
Yes.
That is the contractor pay request will also be there. That's item B4 on the agenda, and that also requires your action. Item B5 is just an FYI.
Oh, the construction.
The construction report.
All right. So, at the moment, we are approving a payment?
Yes.
Right, are we, so I'm just trying to see which one it is that we're.
So, item three is gonna be the one that is titled project tracking sheet.
Right.
And then, item four is you're approving line 8
Okay.
of the dollars associated with line 8 of the pay request on the title sheet there.
But what are we approving on item three?
Project tracking sheet, just the whole thing.
Oh, it's just a try. It's about, we're not doing the dollar amount. That's just showing us where we're at.
As presented.
As, okay, so this is just FYI, basically, and we're now having to approve $573,794.
Three, I mean, it doesn't have to take action, so it's kind of up to you guys. I've seen it go both ways. It's, I assume, since you put it on the agenda, it was going to be an action item. So, if you're gonna, if you want to take action on that every month, that is you getting dispersment from Rural Development.
Okay.
So, that is you receiving money from your funding source. Item four is you authorizing payments to the contractor. So, I would also recommend in the future those two be flipped, so you're taking action on payment to the contractor first, because then you're gonna ask for funding second.
And it's the same dollar amount?
It's slightly different, because it'll include, and this one is more different than normal, because you're requesting funding for engineering fees, and you have the ancillary stuff that the utility has spent. This one's also truing up, because you guys haven't asked for any reimbursement from funding since.
December.
December. So, it's, it's a larger amount that you're asking for funding for, from the Rural Development.
And so, where do we find that?
That is that.
That's the first sheet.
Column D.
Project tracking.
Yep.
And that's the 939,000.
Correct. That would be what you are asking Rural Development to disperse.
Right, but what, and then we would be approving the payment of the 570, correct?
Which is included in the 939.
Yeah, that's a part of the 939. Yep.
So, we should, for future reference, that if we're going to do this every month, the dollar number should be listed as well, so it's not confusing.
Yeah, just unapproved.
Right. But we physically don't do anything. Is that going through you guys?
Yeah, I'd like to sign the paperwork for me tonight.
That's what you wanted me to sign tonight? Got it, got it. All right, so it is here, so let's do it. Looking for approval, even though it's out of order, we'll get it in the right order the next time. Item three, the, the tracking budget. All of it's the same amount. Yep, go ahead.
Austin Cool make a motion to approve City of Water Project tracking budget and funding allocations for wastewater model.
Cummings will second.
Motion by Austin Cool, second by Cummings, and this is from, this is from the Rural Development.
Yes.
Right, asking for funds. Got it, just being clear.
Do we have to make the dollar amount per motion?
Yes, I would. $573,794.
No, no, no.
939.
Okay.
Joke you're wrong.
I am.
As I did.
Bottom of D. All right, whoever made the motion, read the number.
Cummings will second.
At it, girl. Roca.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Wired, yes.
Huts, yes.
There we go. All right. Yes, we are. We'll get better at it for the next meeting. Contractors' application for payment.
73,794.
$573,794.90. See? Got it.
We'll make a motion to approve the contractors' application for payment in the amount of $573,794.90.
Petz will second.
Motion by Charlie Cool, second by Petz, to approve the payment in set amount that we got right this time. Roca.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Wired, yes.
Huts, yes.
Fantastic. Motion carries. New business, Duquesne Development on Clarkson Road. Even myself knows. All right, so. Alright, so at the meetings, employing commission, at the last meeting, we went through a few more items and gave the Duquesne people here some items to come back with, which they have. So on your new drawings in your packet, you will see some of the updates. We have so many pieces that are for- They've also included several drawings of what it's going to look like. So these renditions that you put on here, is this exactly the colors you're using, just curious?
That's what we were based on, yes.
That, that's fine. So that looks very nice, brick, a whole bit. So many, many pages of what that looks like.
I like the snow.
Pardon me?
I like the snow.
Did you like the snow?
No.
I don't. Nope. Quite cool.
Just for a little bit, carry the heat and sunshine.
Alright, so lots of things in the drawings, which of course this all went to Mitch. You also were emailing some information from Mitch, several contingency items on things that needed to still be addressed, which are basic engineering questions, they do have copies of them. If you're looking at your concrete sheets, by all means, ask any questions. But basically the new drawings do show the two driveways, and I think you've changed it or you're working to change the one to be an actual driveway, not just a fire lane.
Correct, a separate access permit was submitted to the DOT for that.
Yep, okay, DOT submitted. And then the sidewalk, of course, is added on there. The playset area was added in there. Mitch, of course, is talking about the pond, which that's something you're working on. You also submitted a new list of all the plantings. I think you've been adding more, didn't you?
Manhole, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Where we took out the access.
Oh, sure.
The sidewalk created some.
Okay. So other than the list that we had from Mitch, you knew this afternoon at a meeting with the utilities, still discussing the sewer that is in the corner right now. And we've talked back and forth, do we want to put it in the road, do we want to put it under sidewalk, what do we want to do with it? Generally, a development does extend it through their development, even though it's already there currently for them to use. I did talk with Keith, he is from Ellers, he's the one that's working on the performa and all the numbers to discuss. And so I did brief them ahead of time that this is going to be something new that wasn't in your packet that was brought up today. And my wonderful engineers that know way more things than me are here, can explain what they want, and we can have a conversation about it. And that's why this is up, it would just stay up. So currently we've got sewer manhole cover, might even show it, no, I guess I can't get it any bigger. Isn't it like right in here, Chad?
Yep, that's right.
Right in that little corner. So their entire design shows everything going in. And this is already in this terrace area. So what Barry had talked about today is that it gets brought up all the way to, just a little smaller, come on. Up to the corner of Clarkson approximately 750 feet. Underneath the sidewalk with access of manhole covers into the two driveways. And that's where I'm going to leave you to talk about why we're doing it, as well as you can talk about what your opinion is on it as well. So I want to have that honest conversation.
Yeah, so I, I guess I'll just start with, Barry just sent this to me this afternoon. So we were just kind of chatting about it, and his big concern, and I would concur with it, is making sure that if you, if you're putting a development in, our, our experience is common practice is if you've got sewer to your front door, you move it to the back door so that the next development can connect onto that. That the sewer was extended to this development by past people, and otherwise it leaves it for future generations to continue to try and make those connections. I think in talking with Barry, you know, you guys have a good situation here with keeping that in the right of way. Normally you would want to see it in the roadway, but one unique thing here that everyone I'm sure realizes is that's a little bit of a blind corner, so I think it even benefits you even more, or not blind corner, blind hill, from a safety standpoint in the future, it does make sense to keep it off on the shoulder. And then, I guess, that's the extent of it. Again, all this qualified with, I had a conversation with Barry this afternoon, that was the first time I'd even heard about this, so.
Just a comment, and we talked to the mayor about this earlier. So we're extending the sewer to the top of a hill, which in my professional opinion, my, my question was, what area are we looking to serve after this?
West.
West, which then goes back downhill. So we're still extending-
From my look at it, you can, they can serve a good portion of the area to the west over here based on the contours and the existing grades.
So you have one more parcel, that one right there, the front of it is buildable. And then if you go to the west, one more-
This is also buildable, right now they're all cornfields.
Right.
But there's a house existing right here.
Right. If you could pan a little more to the west.
Sure.
You could probably actually turn the topography on as well.
We're asking to slow it down. Jenny, if you click over to 15, it'll go faster.
Do what?
Click over to the 2015 area.
Okay. Actually, it's pretty good. Want it any bigger?
So that's the top of the hill there.
Right.
And then it drops off and goes down into the valley. So the amount of area we're talking about serving here is pretty small, less than 40 acres of development. There's sewer on the top of this ridge, correct, in that subdivision?
Where are you talking about?
Uh, on the south side.
Down here.
So is this also sewer over here?
Yeah.
So wouldn't it make sense for all of this to gravity flow down, connecting with the sewer down this way? I mean, we're talking about-
There's no mechanism for that to happen but for about a mile down to the south.
There's, um, so there's a, right here.
Nope. Elevations don't permit that.
It's even down further.
Yeah.
It's not further?
There's that, there's that public access area.
I have no idea.
Oh, it's this one right here.
Keep going. Right there.
Yeah, this one right here.
Nope, keep going.
Am I still going down, or am I going?
Yeah, keep going down, Jenny, I think he's talking about Morrison Field.
Yeah.
Oh, Morrison Field, right here, this is Morrison.
Yeah.
And then, but there's sewer on this right here, I mean, we're talking about-
Yeah, but that's the top of the, the city. All, all that you were pointing at is a, is way up-
That's 60 feet lower than where we are right there.
I'm saying you were point, I mean, we're, we're now quite ways down. And again, I'm going to qualify all of this, I was asked about this four hours ago.
Right.
There is a potential that this happens, but that's a significant development that needs to occur.
Right.
But this, go back up.
Unquestioning, yeah.
Actually zoom out, because it gives a better scale.
Sure, that's fine, that's fine.
So I mean, if we're talking up here, this ridge, starting right here, extends all the way here.
Correct.
So there's no ability for sewer to come this way. And right now there's no mechanism, the sewer, the closest point is right there. Or right there.
So we're still talking about doing a lift station at some point up here, or somewhere ever to get to that.
But this area
Is the development.
Based on a 10 minute look is the potential serviceable area.
And the TID area too.
Okay.
We're, we're on, the, the areas you're pointing to is all part of the TID. Yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah. I don't know, I think in the 10 minutes we've looked at it, we, we'd probably like to, you know, see a better regional study of, you know, really what is this servicing? And is this the best route up to the corner and across versus down at the bottom of the, both of the properties? You would avoid a lift station if you could get to the bottom of that ridge.
But you made some comment about stubbing out or something to do with private property.
Oh, that, I think that was apples and oranges conversation, that wasn't. I don't think that's what he's talking about at all.
So Ben, your suggestion was to go up 89 and across on Clarkson?
My question that I received from Barry, and I want to qualify, I have, there's no recommendation, this is four hours.
Right.
Is normally a development of this sort would extend the sewer beyond their development. I did not look, because when I was looking at the GRS, I didn't look north, but this is also, I mean, an area to the north is also serviceable.
In the town. Yeah.
But again, that's, we can't control what happens 10, 20, 50 years from now. So the, the common practice we've seen and why I brought it up to Barry, and I think a couple others have brought it up, is you would normally extend sewer beyond the development that's occurring.
And the issue was that if we're going to do it, the proper way to do it is underneath the sidewalk. That's going to go along here.
Maintain it within the right of way.
Correct.
And where that's left with is just the grass holder on the right of way there. And because normally you would want to put it into the, the roadway here, it's a state highway. It's also, if you maintain it in the roadway, there are some danger concerns as you get up to the Clarkson intersection.
Right, that intersection.
So on this, this, they're all written in on this, the storm, the sewer, and sanitary?
I'm, I'm not sure what your question is, but-
Are all of the laterals noted on this one sheet?
To do it?
Or no? It says utility and lateral notes on it?
Are you talking Mitch's, from Mitch's?
It's probably our flames.
Five corner.
Five corner?
Yeah.
Yeah, everything is available to us already.
All three of them are written on here?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
If we run that under a subdivision, can we connect onto it to the next one?
Say again?
Run the sewer through subdivision, can you connect onto the next parcel?
The, it would need to be public sewer, so the, all the infrastructure within the site is private.
Right.
So no, the neighbor wouldn't connect to the private-
So then it'd make more sense to take it up to Clarkson Road.
Well.
Yes.
That, if it were public, yes.
When they float up Champion Packing, everybody had to pump theirs up to 19 and then go down. When it was Champion Packing, it was all one, and it'd go right across to the sewer point.
Okay.
So it'd make more sense to go up to Clarkson Road, so you connect more people onto it, because then you're in public.
It would be public then, yes.
And that really wouldn't change?
Other than cost.
It's an added cost to the development, yeah. Which would be in the conversation of the developer agreement. 750 feet?
I, my engineer quoted nearly 100, 100,000 for public sewer to go there, yeah.
Okay.
Because I'm assuming it's going to need to be deep at the top of the hill.
Would, would that-
It's going to interfere with a lot of the utilities that are already there.
There's-
Storm sewer up at the top. Yeah, up at the top there's a catch basin where storm sewer comes across. It would intercept-
That's all shallow, that's all shallow.
Well, it accepts quite a bit of water, that whole Clarkson Road comes across there, so we'll have to do something.
Chad probably has some-
Would the extension of that sewer mean in the public right of way reduce onsite footages for sanitary?
No, no. Very minimal.
Where is the, everything, and that building across east, right, yeah, east of my mouse is over here? Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That was on Jay's, or whatever that is.
Can that be extended from that point? If there were another development to the west of this?
I don't know.
I don't know where sewer is on, is it on Clarkson, east of Monroe, no?
Storm sewer?
Sanitary.
Sanitary is not.
Sanitary is probably always in these subdivisions.
Probably will go up to long.
Being a public utility, would it be expected that the developer bid and construct it, or is that something-
That was a conversation you asked.
Yeah, that'd be up to you guys as to how you would want to tackle that.
And I don't honestly know what the right answer is to that.
Okay. Is that a Barry question, or is that a-
I would think it would be the commission, right?
What's the question?
Sure. But who would bid on it?
Who would be responsible for, you know, bidding and constructing?
Whoever you guys decide to do it in the development agreement, you guys.
Well, that's kind of what I was thinking. And then it gets dedicated to the utility, right, afterwards. So, I mean, honestly, $100,000 doesn't sound like a whole lot of a big deal to me. When we're talking millions of dollars for the project. I, I'd like to hear others' opinions.
Well, I agree, but I don't think that it should be borne by the city. I mean, the city is going through a lot right now with its utilities. You keep, you throw another $100,000 on top of it.
It's going to be part of the TID district.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, you give that money back, right?
Yeah.
Over time.
Over time, yeah.
Which is what you'd have a conversation with Ellers with tomorrow morning.
Right, because they're going through-
There's always the potential of infrastructure costs that are going to be borne by the TID as it's going through its life cycle.
So it could be wrapped into the TID, I mean, it's part of that package.
That's the-
Right.
That's the, I can do it.
So, so the question really is, do we want this done now? Do we want it put in this right of way, under the sidewalk, however it needs to be? And then that's part of the negotiation we'll be doing with the developer agreement. We just need to know, besides the items that Mitch has on his, which was what we would approve this contingent upon, getting those answers, which they've seen, a lot of them are just basic punch list items. But this was a new one. And I know I've asked about it for months and months and months. And today's meeting, it came out, they want it done. So now it's us that have this conversation.
Yeah, I mean, if you expect to develop more to the west, it's a no brainer, especially if we-
Which we hope so.
If you can't pull from Harrod Court up on there, right?
Correct.
Right.
I don't believe anything's there, correct?
Harrod Court is 50.
That's the one we're just looking for.
And that's all private there?
No, there's public sewer up there, but-
Oh, that is.
It's 950, so it's all further away.
41 feet higher than the Clarkson Road.
Oh. Oh, you're talking up, yeah, yeah, that definitely-
Other side, right, Harrod Court's over here.
Right, yeah, no, I mean, that's not, that's here, that's not feasible.
That's the last question.
And it's cheaper to probably do it now with the whole project versus five years from now?
And less hassle.
And less hassle, that way we're not tearing the sidewalk back up five years from now.
Right, and running it all the way-
There's no sidewalk there now, so.
But there will be, that's in the drawing that we, that's part of our ordinance, correct.
Yeah, that makes sense, if we get it back in the TID now.
Are you smiling about it?
I was just saying that if we go to the west, it'll be a urban cross section, a old, perfect gutter.
Correct.
And that would be a point where we extend the sewer up.
Which is why I have no intention of putting anything in Clarkson at this point. There's no need for it until we can design that road. But up to it, before it's too late.
Do we have to make a motion tonight, or can we have you spend a little bit more than four hours on it and let us know his recommendation? I mean, or are we supposed to be recommending this?
Yes, and we can make that contingent in the approval.
As much as I dislike contingencies, I understand the developer side and
Right.
and I'm looking for an approval to continue, to continue to go forward.
Right, they, they've made all the adjustments that we've asked of them in the layout, the design, the sidewalks- Right, they've, they've made all the adjustments that we've asked of them in the layout, the design, the sidewalks, the trees, and all of that. This was a, a last-minute twist, that I, I think, after talking with Ellers as well, feels that this should be a part of the development.
I mean, trees and sidewalks are kind of equal, I mean.
Pardon me?
Trees and sidewalks are kind of inexpensive compared to. Of, yeah.
Well, and we're.
But it's still, I mean, it's, it is true, I mean, we are developing for the west.
And we're adding the sidewalk on the two properties below that, too, that's, that's a city expense.
Oh, yeah. Right.
Mitch, I think, gave a price in there of that, so, that'll be part of our budget.
The normal we had to pay for the first time?
We took that out years ago.
Any other surprises?
I hope not.
Do you have anything for us, surprise?
Surprises?
Not at this point.
So the next thing is the development agreement?
Correct, so this would be approving the concept, as it is with this last drawing, including all the contingencies, which they already have a copy of, but including the storm sewer up to Clarkson. They're actually having a conversation tomorrow, what's that? San, I'm sorry, sanitary, sanitary, they're having a conversation with Ellers tomorrow, um, we've already got the, um, template coming to the CDA on Tuesday for, uh, developer agreement, coming, because everything we're gonna be doing now was a pay-go, they had asked if they needed to be there, and I said, no, this is the template, we're just trying to get ahead of the game to get the documents ready. The numbers is the big part, how we negotiate all of that together. Richard, do you have questions?
Yeah, Richard.
These are, you have similar buildings, is it Brilliant, or is it Sturgeon Bay, or?
So, the three-story building is currently being built in Takana.
Okay.
And we also have a sled to be built in Sturgeon Bay. We have built in Brilliant, but nothing in the last, uh, year or so.
But similar concept with the, this shorter brick on the bottom?
Yes, that's correct, yep.
And I did see those, um, some pictures on the line of those, and actually, they're really nice, they look really nice.
Yeah.
Building apartments are impressive.
And Mitch has seen these?
Yes, Mitch has seen everything, which is why, and he just got the CAD drawings yesterday, so in his email to us, he said, in effort to get this all over to you sooner rather than later, we've completed a plan review, uh, you'll see from our comments, there's still a lot of technical questions or issues that would need to be addressed, so they have a copy of Mitch's red-line, um, plans, which I emailed to you, and, uh, the two-page document from yesterday. We've not had time to review the storm water management, is that what the CAD was about, was the water management?
Uh, the report, storm management report, yeah.
Just report? So, that, that is still forthcoming, as soon as I figure out the question. So that'll be coming as soon as possible, any questions from that will be reviewed by, uh, Mitch and the developer.
We're not expecting surprises from the storm, yeah?
No, I think Mitch is probably.
No, that's all set appropriately, yeah.
At this point, thinking it might be just too big, I mean, that was a comment that he made.
Right.
I can't imagine it's not big enough, so, and as far as phasing, because that'll be part of the developer agreement as well, the, the phasing was going to be, the pond is like really one of the first things you're doing, obviously, because everything's gotta come underneath that, and then it's those two units, eighteen, the two eighteen units.
Correct, along the road.
Along the road. So, what is your pleasure?
Wait a second. I'm, I'm trying to understand these network of pipe for the, the wet utilities, and why there's so much storm, it seems to me that these elevations suggest, in a surface here, that you could shorten up some of the lines, put a lot of this pipe in the ground.
You're talking for storm sewer?
I am, for starters, we'll get this sanitary later.
The storm runs between all the buildings, so everything slopes from garage floor and first floor of the apartment to the center of the pavement, and then down. So rather than just sheet flowing it down the pavement, we're collecting it.
I understand, you got catch basins, but on the, on the west side, you've got an invert at eight ninety-three, seven-five, and you got one at eight ninety-two, sixty-five, and then they invert to the south, where these Y into each other at a greater distance than merely going across the parking area. You see the, you see the Y for the storm?
Yeah, storm man, manhole two.
Okay, so go up to catch basin twelve and five, if you run the pipe from twelve to five, which is a shorter distance than from, uh, twelve to two, you can save yourself some footage of pipe, you might have to upsize the diameter slightly, but you're still dumping down into the same storm that goes from twelve to.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Do you want me to pull it up here, so you can see it?
No, I can read this much better, thank you, though.
Right, which I can pull off, off the website, I may have made that favorite on the. This, which one is it? This isn't, I don't know. It is not? Okay.
I thought that was.
It's not about this line here.
It's a separate thing. Uh, wasn't a log right here, got it.
Oh, we can, this is our garage, this is our garage building.
You can go on there and watch it?
Well, I don't think we watch it.
Well, that's different than can.
So we're just saying, this, we go there.
Well, right, and there's, on the west side, exactly, some of the sanitary, if you run this main up here, I don't understand why I can't just go out here and be shorter.
Well, that one could be, I still have to come all the way out here, so that one, and I still have to come all the way with this one, and this one's lower, so I still have to go three separate levels.
But that may be this equal distance to run the whole thing. And much less effort to maintain. This, this, I have real concerns with how these are all skewed against each other.
I know, right.
And in high proximity to each other. I've been a plan reviewer for eighteen years, so I, I've seen a lot of this stuff, and I just, I would never allow that where I work, but.
Well.
It's a private development.
It has a separation.
I understand it has a separation, but go fix that sewer main, it's way below that water main that comes across at a twelve-degree angle, you could open up the world to go do that.
Is, does that have any?
No, we have no jurisdiction to do anything about it, but I think, I think it's.
Okay.
Well, that can be with Mitch's comments, too, yeah.
Right, that's what I was.
Yeah.
Gonna ask you, yeah.
And that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, if someone sees a better way to do something, I mean, with all.
Right on. Those better mousetrap.
Right.
Richard's.
Yeah, well, I don't have everything, and I did not review this like I do in my job, so, I just see some inefficiencies and crossings that aren't necessarily necessary. By moving things around, you won't cross a water main with this, with this storm sewer, and have to insulate it or have the possibility, especially on a dead-end hydrant, insulating that water main, that gets no volume through it.
Sure.
And that's my, that's a concern, I don't want, I don't want you to have to fix this stuff, I don't want it to go in and be in.
Right, no.
By some simple adjustments, moving that hydrant to the north, and swapping that manhole, moving that slightly to the south, you could avoid another crossing, and the potential risk of, of freezing. I just think that could, take some refinement and, and square some corners, and move where, like, the san, the sanitary comes out of a building, to make a shorter distance with your sanitary connections. And, and I know you got a long building, it's two hundred and fifty-four feet long, you're gonna try to run it one end to the other, but you're gonna get there at the end anyway.
Right. Right.
I would like to see you take a look at that, I, we won't make a contingency, I don't think, but if I were developing this, I'd be really concerned about having to fix that.
Okay.
In the future, because repairs will be needed. Crossing pipes at skewed angles is always, in my opinion, a bad idea, we like to go perpendicular as much as possible.
Anything else?
No, that, that's my rant for right now.
Appreciate your comments, now's the time to speak. So, uh, based then off of Mitch's requirements and the desire to put in the sanitary sewer, if that is your recommendation as a committee, then we will add that as item eleven on here, and I'll just get the wording proper, but I need your opinions on that. The details can be worked out.
Details can be worked out.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, we can get a motion.
I will make that motion.
All right, so, uh, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So, what's the motion?
The, the motion is to add to Mitch's contingency, which will, will get the full motion in it, but because of the document that we had dated June fourteenth, from Mitch, stated his comments based on what he saw, knowing that he still has, um, the CAD going to look at the storm water management, which they'll go through together, so it doesn't need to come back to us, the engineers, Chris Bushkey, whatnot, they'll all go through all of this. Our next phase is then we'll be working on the developer agreement, which.
The concept of.
The concept is approved, they can get doing what they have to do, um, and hopefully, we can keep this project going, and interest rates don't keep going up, and all that good stuff. So, I just need the proper terminology for this, between Chad and, and Ben, if you can say that, so we're adding item eleven to include the sanitary sewer to Clarkson Road, under or near, is it, are we calling it a sidewalk right-of-way? Pardon me, just the right-of-way?
Public right-of-way.
Public, um, under or near the public, uh, public, right.
Within, I think is your answer.
Pardon me?
Within the public right-of-way.
Yeah, within the public right-of-way, so, you can work that out with our engineer, so it isn't like you need to come back to talk to us, so how you guys address that with, with Mitch, Mitch will no doubt get ahold of you, Ben, if he's got questions, or he'll deal with his own, um, so.
There might be a creative solution out there, too, you know, maybe you could shoot.
Correct.
I think the idea is to get it to the western edge of the park, right?
Correct.
Northern.
Western is northern.
Well, northern, well, yeah.
Has to be northern.
Northern, and then it's gonna go west.
Right away.
But we're getting it just to the northern section that follows their development, which, if we're gonna be putting sidewalks and things like that, now's the time to do it. If in any way, shape, or form it helps change anything in your drawings, and makes something better, have at it.
Which still doesn't take it beyond the development, it takes it to the one.
No. It takes it to the one corner, and at this.
And, it's, it's better, but it's still not the full answer, we'll still someday have to add that.
Correct. Right, but that someday is going to be an entire road project as well, so I don't want to put something in there now that we're like, oh darn, it should really be over here.
I agree.
Yeah, so, we know this has no other option, this is it.
Yeah, we gotta get it to that.
Right, right, all right, so.
Correct.
Uh, I will then be, if there are no other comments or questions, since I can find my agenda, but I now have no idea where it went. There it is, here we go, so, uh, the Duquesne Development, um, Clarkson, looking for, um, approval of the concept plan, and, pardon me? Questions?
I don't, I don't think so, no, I don't know.
Okay. Nothing, not, not, don't, all we did is approved it adding all items to this, so we haven't approved the actual plan, adding these contingencies, so we just approved editing this, okay? So, the Duquesne Development, as it is currently presented, along with the eleven items now listed on, uh, the Rolling Meadow Apartments Plan Review by our engineer, so this is approved contingent upon these items being addressed satisfactorily to our engineers, and everything will be prior to pulling a permit. Anyone want a motion?
No, we did, that one wasn't there this?
That was just for the.
That was just for number eleven, we already did that, that was just for adding number eleven to the plan, so now I'm asking for the actual.
I want a motion with you just explained.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Charlie Cool, second by Pets, to approve the Duquesne Development as presented with eleven contingency items as explained by our city engineer. Roll call, Cummings, yes?
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Leonard, yes.
That's yes.
Motion, carry, thank you.
Just have one little discussion to that.
Okay.
Those changes.
Yep.
On the eleven items.
Yep.
May cause additional changes.
Possibly, but that's what they're gonna work out between the engineers and Chad, or whoever all has to.
Right, I just know.
Right.
Limiting it to the eleven without a caveat that it may create other issues.
That's what.
Understood, that's.
All the engineers are gonna work out.
We need approval, site plan approval from the engineer, just about mine.
Right, bottom line, yep.
We have issues because of that, dumb.
All right.
We may not get like, like, full months for like three, two years or something, I don't know.
All right, this was a long process getting here, but thank you for your patience, and.
Thank you.
Hearing us and listening to us, and a lot of us, this is the first time doing this, so.
Sure.
You know, we want it done right, and we want everybody to be successful, so, we're here to help, sincerely, we're here to help. All right, future dinner items and announcement, anything exciting?
Dave, anything?
Fourth of July information will be coming up soon. All right, that was.
Throw over a ratsky.
All right. Anybody else?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Richard had something else.
What are we monitoring now?
I thought, like, I didn't remember going through the wire transfer policy.
Yeah, we did, yeah, that was your picture that you had to turn over.
I was.
All right. Motion by Charlie.
Cummings looks happy.
There we go, second by Cummings, to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion. We're done.